All right, I think it's six o'clock. I will open the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. It's Monday, July 24th, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. We are meeting here in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. There is Zoom access that's available. We are also being recorded for live streaming on cable access, as well as recorded for YouTube and on-demand access as well. So if we can start with the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, untoing the republic with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just us.
Thank you. And if I may, just before we get started, if we can just have a moment of silence for our former Rutland firefighter, Bob Leaffico, who recently passed. I'd like to start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to extend my condolences to his family still in town, as well as everyone who has known him and the work that everyone did to have him home. So thank you. And I'm sorry for your loss. We have minutes, treasury warrant, and payroll. So I would take a motion for approval of such.
Make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant 23-28 and Payroll 23-PW-28. Treasury Warrant 24-2 and Payroll 24-PW-2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Anything major, Austin? No? Thank you. I'll take a roll call then. Harry?
Uh, Secman, I.
Maston, recuse myself from payroll cable activities.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I, excluding Safe Place.
And Whitman, I. And we have the minutes from our July 10th meeting.
Like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, July 10th, 2023.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Tamika, for doing them. If not, I'll take a roll call. Harry?
Secman, I.
Maston, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I. I wanted to start this evening by congratulating our Little League U-12, 12U team for a fabulous win this weekend, which they made them, or offered them the opportunity to claim the Section 1 championship. They've traveled long distances, kind of all over the western half of the state, and they've battled the weather, just like all of us. And their perseverance is taking them to the states. So I believe states begin Thursday in Oxford.
Yep.
Um, so congratulations to the, to the boys, the coaches, the parents, the family, everyone involved. And go Rutland.
Absolutely. Four teams left in the whole state. Rutland's one of them.
That's awesome.
Yeah, pretty rough.
Yeah. So way to go, guys. Um, Thursday night is-
What age group is this?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
So Thursday is also Rutland's takeover, Rutland's town takeover at the Woodsocks. Tickets are still available. The link is on our website, and I think it's been pushed via social media also. Come have fun at the ballpark, support our residents who are singing the National Anthem, throwing out the first pitch. I believe the Woodsocks are honoring the late Ken Woe. And ticket proceeds go towards Hope Lives Here as our nonprofit. So get your tickets and come celebrate at the park with us. Friday night, Concerts on the Common are back with the hometown band, the Midnight Riders. It's always a big, fun time. So come on out. The weather hopefully will hold. And then Saturday is Food Truck Festival, noon to 5:00 at Naqawag Elementary School. There'll be a wide variety of food trucks, the Fire Brigade Beer Tent, and lots of local crafters. Still something for everyone. So it's a big weekend for Rutland, or end of week, I guess. I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the various aspects of the master plan development over the past couple of years. The Master Plan Steering Committee met last week and recommended the plan to the planning board for adoption. That's part of the process. And then the fun of the implementation of the plan begins. So it's not anywhere near over. And the big push from that committee is to not have it just sit on a shelf and collect dust, but to actually be a living document that we refer to to set, look at zoning, set policy, and that. So thank you from community aspect, as well as staff support, CMRPC support, and everyone who participated in the many surveys and community feedback and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was there a lot of, I saw we had, they had like a month open for suggestions and was there a lot? Do you know?
There was not much-
Really?
Feedback. So I think throughout the process, there were a lot of, there were two or three surveys presented to the community. There was an-person opportunity for people to provide feedback and everything. So a lot of the, I think there were four or five comments. A couple of them were just kind of saying, "Good job." And everything else was either not specific to a master plan or kind of already addressed in a different aspect of the master plan.
Okay.
So, yep. I personally received a lot of feedback as far as implementation. So I think that that's something that Planning Office and Select Board will have to really be mindful of going forward, how to make sure that we're using that document as we're looking at things. So. And I wanted to say thank you and that I appreciate everyone's patience with the Puma Gussit roadwork. I don't think any of us thought that going into the the roadwork that we'd be seeing a month of record rainfall. And it's been challenging for everyone. So I appreciate the responsiveness of the town staff here, our office, DPW, I know has been fielding a lot, as well as Recreation has been putting up with a lot with the pool and the parking lot and everyone. So I thank everyone for their commitment to that and for the public to continue to reach out to us, either through DPW or our office, to let us know so we can keep those lines of communication open. The state, I think, has been quite responsive to address the issue. So I appreciate that on the state and contractor side as well, that we're all trying to work together to make a really not great situation as best as we can. So thank you all. And Austin had shared a tentative budget schedule with Chair of FinCom and I, and we're hoping to start kind of next month in August working on the 2025 budget, the fiscal year 2025 budget. And the focus will really kind of at that point start with capital needs in once so that that way there can be plenty of opportunity to do the full vetting through our office, CIPC, and look at funding opportunities and everything as well. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Anything?
Just, I think this is the first time we've had a group brought together to look at the long-term stuff that fits into a budget. So I think Austin should get kudos for that, without question.
Thank you, Austin. Um, moving into public comment, we have some members here, some, any public comments?
Okay. First of all, DPW, thank you for grinding up Wantuesett Street. You did a hell of a good job. Matt, Paul Maston, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
This here is something that chews at me quite a bit when I go through town and see vehicles unregistered and everything else. And it's been many a times I've asked the chief, "How come you're not coming down on them?" I'm throwing it back to you guys. I want to know what's going on, if possible.
This is the unregistered motor vehicles?
Yes. Any more than two unregistered motor vehicles is not allowed. But boy, I tell you.
Where, where is it?
I am so glad you did a hell of a job, honest to Pete.
I think this is bylaw. It's-
That will be one of the ones we're going to be working on.
Yeah, that's, it's in that list.
Yeah.
I've done some talking about it through the PD, and so yeah, there's some thoughts there. We'll save it for discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Dick?
The current bylaw.
When you drive around town, you see unregistered motor vehicles, how many houses do you see them at? Is it really extensive? Or is it like in a certain area where there's a group of homes that have them through it, or what? What are you seeing now?
It's a little bit of both.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's the question that, I try to keep a vague idea when I've seen these things so that if I go back in a year's time or whatever and I see it still sitting there, or the vehicles or whatever, you know, it just eats at me. So. Just those things.
I guess we'll get into this. What's the process for notifying the chief that we have an unregistered? Is that up to the townspeople? You say, "Hey, I got this car sitting across the street from me," or?
I think we can talk about it in the bylaw meeting as we get-
Yeah, I guess it's going to-
As we get to it.
And I think it should be up to the police too. They're always cruising around. So why aren't they, rather than counting on other people to come to them and say, "Hey, don't fund this"? They should be enacting our bylaws.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Um, we will move into the public hearing. Tamika, is, everything has been received and the paperwork has been?
Yep. So I noted in my memo that I am going to ask the board to postpone it to August 7th. I spoke with the property owner's attorney today. She is going to have everything ready to go. I will have received everything in time for the board to open it on August 7th.
Okay. So we will just postpone it to August 7th?
Yep.
Yep.
If the board is making a motion.
Yep. So I would take a motion to postpone to August 7th.
Make a motion to postpone the public hearing. Sell chapped land. What is it, Plaza 4, Nap 34B, Emerald Street to, I'm sorry, April's?
August.
August 7th, sorry, August 7th.
Second motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? I'll take a roll call. Harry?
Secman, I.
Maston, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Tamika. Um, we will move into the town administrator update then.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I do have several updates, but I want to start with the most exciting and I think the most important for tonight. I want to let the board know that I have appointed a new Public Works Director, Chris Kalowski. He is the current DPW foreman of 20-something years. He also has experience owning his own business and also he was previously an ironworker. But Chris has been in the acting capacity for just over a month or so now. He's, I think, really assisted the department with a lot of the projects that we're working on. I view him as a wealth of knowledge as well, with a lot of the infrastructure and building needs that I think is really a priority of not only the community, but I know the Public Works Department. So I have full confidence in Chris and his leadership of the department, and I look forward to working with him. And I think he'll do a great job assisting us with the needs of the Department of Public Works.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you for the work that you've put in over the past month or so. I know there were a lot of projects, big projects, up in the air, and it's been-
Trying to get a handle on them.
A lot.
The rain hasn't helped.
Yeah. So thank you and thank the whole department for all of their work because I know it's a team effort down there. So thank you. And hopefully we can get you guys some, some of your big needs back now that we have a little bit more.
The first things we got to work on.
Yeah. So thank you and welcome to the roll. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris. And thank you for the past couple of months. You've been helpful, as well as I'm settling into this role too. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, of course, Lee, you took a lot of my items in my update. But I just want to mention, as Mr. Williams mentioned, the DPW was finally able to get the mower repaired. So they started mowing, roadside mowing, I think a week or almost two weeks ago at this point. They did start on Wantuesett Street and Route 68. So, you know, slowly but surely, as staff is available, they'll get to some of the other high-needs areas of the town as well. Lee, I mentioned, we've had some significant rainfall. I looked on National Weather Service. Just in the past 30 days alone, we've had over 20 inches of rainfall, which is, I think, unprecedented. And I do want to thank the Public Works Department, Public Safety, and other town staff for their response in cleaning the roads and attending to, obviously, the service needs of the community. But also I just want to appreciate everyone's patience as we work to, you know, respond to some of these needs. Obviously, Puma Gussit was one of the bigger ones, Maple Ave, you know, some of the other areas of town that need some work in terms of that effort. So I do, just really do want to highlight and thank everyone for their patience. As Lee mentioned, I did send a tentative budget schedule to Select Board Chair, but also to the Finance Committee Chair for their opportunity to notify their respective boards. As was mentioned, we are hoping to start the capital process next month. The capital manual will be sent to departments within the next couple of weeks. And then ideally, that's the beginning of prime time. So getting operating budget requests in and then presenting and doing public hearings. My tentative end goal is to have a final budget by mid-February. All goes well, I think that's very possible. I think we have a good opportunity to start early and get everyone on the same page. And I look forward to working with Capital, Finance Committee, and obviously this board to get that complete. I also want to mention and thank the Superintendent of Schools for inviting me for a tour of Naqawag Elementary School. An interesting school, has a lot of needs. So I mentioned capital. There's a lot of needs there as well, but a lot of history there, which was just pretty interesting to learn about the building and kind of how it's transitioned over the years. So I want to thank the superintendent and his staff for inviting me to that tour. Just also want to mention that the Town Hall parking lot is, well, you probably have seen it already. It's milled at the moment. Currently, the parking lot is on schedule to be paved next Monday, the 31st. So they'll be grading the parking lot either Friday or on Monday, and then paving on Monday as well. So it'll be nice to have a nice, fresh, new, flatter, just overall better parking lot. So I do want to thank Mastod for partnering with us and really providing just a lot of resources that we don't have at the moment for that high-needs parking lot. And then also just want to follow up. I know I sent a notification to the board, but also to the community about the water main leak at Maple and Main intersection. Just one of those. We have a lot of infrastructure needs, as Chris mentioned to me, especially with our water infrastructure. So this was a leak we had known about for a while. And finally, with the new resources of this budget, we're able to repair. So surely we'll work through the next couple of months and years to get to the rest of the infrastructure. But just want to thank DPW for their efforts in repairing that major leak. Certainly not where we need to be in terms of the town-wide infrastructure, but it's one of the big ones that we're able to take care of. So that is all I have for my update. If I could answer any questions, if there's any.
I wanted to thank you, Austin. I know you've been putting in a lot of long hours and days here also, especially with all the rain and everything. So thank you for that also.
Thanks. Yeah, I spent one of, I don't know, maybe it was 10 of those 20 inches on a Sunday, 5:30 in the morning, watching it pour because I wanted to see where the water was flowing, which was interesting. And sure enough, I was not allowed back in the house. And my car still, I think, smells like it, so.
You're going to get an honorary civil degree after all the time here.
Go to the chair. I saw you there at Maple Ave, and I was about ready to holler at you, but you looked like you had your hands full as it was. But it's good to see you out there and doing that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Long as your vehicle is registered. That's all that matters.
You can check on that.
Any other questions, comments?
Good job.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Austin, for the updates. Um, moving into new and special business, we are having a joint meeting tonight with the Historical Commission. I'm happy you guys are here. I think we've been trying to connect for a little while. And so it's nice to see you and that we could all kind of make the time tonight for that. So thank you. So I think you had an update that you wanted to talk?
Yes.
Have conversation around, or?
Sure. Yes.
By all means.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Whitman, for having us. We actually do not have a quorum at the moment. Lynn Turcot was not able to be with us this evening, unfortunately. She wanted to, but she wasn't able to. So we did want to share with you, and if you want to get this in writing, let me know. I can, we can try to get you some paper copies or emails of this. Just kind of a working list of goals that we have as a commission that we've identified on our end, just to communicate them and seek some input, as well as some questions that we've come up with regarding some of them as well. One of them was working toward getting some sites possibly listed on the state and/or national register. One in particular, or two, if you will, would be the Woodhouse and Studio. As most of you are probably aware, that was the residence Franklin T. Wood, who was an artist in town. I believe he was, came here as a result of having tuberculosis, as many folks in town at that period of time did. His studio was behind the Woodhouse. There's a little access road kind of in between there and the fire station, which was fixed up several years ago by the, with the assistance of the previous Historical Commission led by Helen Viner, Eddie Bracebridge. Many of you probably know a lot of those folks who were in charge of that, if you've been here for a while. So that was restored with a lot of, a lot of labor of love there. And one issue that I want to get ahead of myself. As far as the national register, state register, we've been dealing with a lot of other items on the list. So we really haven't been able to do a whole lot with that as of yet. But that's kind of, hopefully, in the works once we get through some of the other goals that we've been, that have been ongoing at this point. Second, we're not really, I'm not really going through this in any particular order, just as we've identified them. The Central Tree. There was an Eagle Scout project to restore that a couple of years ago. Some of the landscaping, a little bit of edging for that area was done. However, there was talk about putting a new sign there. That was not done. And as far as I know, this particular Eagle Scout has probably, I don't know how you would say it graduated, moved on from scouting. So we're looking at possibly trying to make that, or exploring the possibility of making that a little bit easier to catch because it's so hard for, so easy to drive by and nobody knows that it even exists. And here it is. We brag about it all the time. We would probably be looking at, just as a courtesy, even though it's, from what we understand, we have to confirm it. I believe that little square is a piece of town property. I could be wrong. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. But possibly, we were thinking about seeing if we could get some kind of exploration of sign options design, maybe something like what they have in Paxton, if it's amenable to the residents and to anybody else in town. We'd probably have to do some fundraising of some kind. Or there was talk of possibly grant funds from the state. So that's why there was a request information as far as gift accounts, things like that. So that's just kind of in the very beginning stages. We don't know how that's going to go at the moment. It's a point of interest. Definitely, it's been talked about for some time. Number three, which is a little more pressing, is the Woodhouse and Studio. There have been a lot of needs over in those buildings, as you've probably heard. First of all, the roof. The roof replacement. The front of the roof and the garage, I believe, was completed as far as state funds and ARPA funds. And Sheila was the basket to be done.
Right. So Sheila Judkins, Wheeler Road, member of the Rutland Historical Commission. So where the leak was really was over the eyebrow front window in the attic. So the monies that Senator Goby had worked so diligently and hard to support us, that area was replaced, as well as fixing the garage roof because there were quite a few leaks there too. And we appreciate DPW helping out with that. But still, the rest of the roof, I mean, although it's not leaking at this time, you know, that is a priority, I would say, to finish that and complete the job, if possible. We also have other needs, which, last December, there was an accident where the building inspector had stepped on a glass panel of the ceiling and came through. The flooring had to be removed in that area due to damage. And that still is left open. We have scatter rugs that are covering the area. Before this board, with the other board and former town administrators, you know, was aware that that repair needed to be completed, but had kind of just gone on to be a work in progress. The gutters in the back and along the back of the Woodhouse also needs to be removed and repaired, along with, I see priorities primarily on the front porch as well. Where the columns and the railings are at the far end, closer to the garage, is definitely a concern and needing of repair there as well, just to name a few. The Rutland Historical Society, which I'm the president of, we did offer and paid for the replacement. We needed a new furnace, which, back in January, started to really backfire and cause a lot of combustion and carbon monoxide. So, we paid for that. We got several bids and through our own account. We also replaced the soil pipe that was from the bathroom at the Wood House down into the basement, which was leaking. And we also hired a contractor, local plumber, to handle that. And everything is good there. So, we really have a commitment and just, and you know we do. And just want to bring it to your attention as well.
We really, we really view that, that building as a real hub for the community. And with, with all of the events that the Historical Society hosts there and the artifacts that are housed there, most of which are irreplaceable. We, we really want to make sure that, and plus the historical aspect of that, that building and, and who lived there. Want to try to keep that up as best as we can. I think there's a lot of, a lot of community interest to make sure that, that that continues on and remains standing and in, in good condition for, for years to come. One thing, one other thing that I kind of came to my attention through some of the commission meetings and with some of the discussions there is handicap access. That we have one ramp that goes into the rear door for the kitchen that I don't believe is even up to ADA standards. Goes up to that one room in the kitchen, then there's a step that goes up into the rest of the building. So, most of that building is not even handicapped accessible. And it's a town building. We've had members, I believe, of the Historical Society, where it's been an issue for them to get into the building.
Whether it be with wheelchairs or not. We did put up some new railings on the front of the porch entering in. Joe Buckley hired people to come and we, we placed the, the brick stairs going up into the porch because they were unlevel and, and dangerous. We also have added new railings going from the main hallway down into what we call the sunroom, because there are several steps there. But, you know, we've had members of our committee, as well as the historical committee, and I just feel badly that people in wheelchairs particularly couldn't have access to, to being able to participate in various programs and, and events there.
And
The Wood Studio?
Yes, the Wood Studio as well.
The ramp?
The ramp still is in need of repair, from what I understand. That's, last I heard about that was a couple of weeks ago.
And I know Ag Commission and
Yeah.
other organizations and committees of town regularly use that, but we haven't had, been able to have access for that for well over a year, I would say. And I know that, you know, people, members and non-members of the Historical Society have approached us. And I believe even approached former leaders that, you know, they're willing to donate the materials and do the work. And, you know, I'd like to have us explore that as well. Which, you know, is just, again, people really are concerned and want to preserve and keep these buildings open for public use.
Absolutely. And I think even with the handicapped access, I, I would wonder, I'm, I'm not a grant expert, but, but I would wonder if there are some kind of grant funds available for, for that purpose. Possibly to have something that would not take away too much from the, or alter the structure itself too much, but to make it more accessible to the public, or as much of the building as possible.
Whether it could be a portable ramp that could go at the far end of the porch, where the railings are loose, that might be an opportu, an option. But, you know, we've just been, just hypothesizing different plans and things that could be done.
If I may, and I think what we really want to do is come to the board to say, these are, a lot of it's just regular building maintenance that hasn't been done. And what can we do as far as capital planning, anything, line items to start doing regular maintenance on some of these? I mean, because like Sheila said, there's what, over a million dollars' worth of artifacts that are housed
Right.
in those buildings?
Probably about, hmm, more than five years ago, the town leaders asked the Historical Society to perform a, an, an assessment, an audit of all of the artifacts that we have. And definitely over a million dollars' worth of, of very valuable things that are there. So, we just want to continue to preserve and keep those all safe as well. And also, not just for our Wood House and Wood Studio, but also for all other town buildings as well. To see about, is there any way to have a better budget line item that
For regular maintenance.
For regular maintenance.
Like you said, we, the Rutland Historical Society is the one that put up the funds to replace the furnace. And as far as you know, there hadn't been regular, even just service maintenance done on that. And, you know, so that to me is, that's a safety issue. That building is being used. If it's, you know, if there's carbon monoxide concerns, that's a problem. So, you know, just even from that perspective, just keeping up what we need to, you know, for any of the town buildings, like you said, not just necessarily these.
Through the chair?
Yep.
I want, you know, I am the chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and I do want you to know, you have not been forgotten.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I know
There are many things that have come through that committee, and we did authorize spending almost forty thousand dollars to do that roof. Now, I don't know why I'm hearing that it's not completed the way it should, because you say there could be a potential for rain. That kind of upsets me when we spent an enormous amount for a roof. I know we, there was money allocated to do some foundation work and all that. So, yeah, I, I hear you. And sometimes, we don't hear a lot from the Historical Society, so it's not the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. You know, but you haven't been forgotten, just, just to let you know.
Chair, if I could just ask a question. What ever happened with the chimneys?
I'm sorry?
The chimneys, well, I think from former Joe Buckley was saying that they thought that the chimneys were in much dire straits than what they really wore. So, they pointed them and, because they were concerned that maybe they were going to collapse, but it wasn't that case at all, so.
Right, because I remember if, when I first started on this board, it was when they first voted. I think it was fifty thousand dollars we voted to put towards those chimneys.
I think it was to the whole roof.
To the whole roof.
Oh, was it the whole roof? Okay. Because I just remember the chimneys coming up.
And if I may, I think what happened was, the original quote was not
Like, it was crazy.
a comprehensive quote, and so it was much lower. And so, the actual money to do all of the work ended up far exceeding the amount that was allocated. Um, and so that's kind of why it was triaged then to address the, the areas that had the immediate leaks and then hope that we could work out a way to, to address the back half, if I remember correctly. Um, if I may, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, I think with the, the flooring concern, I thought that there was insurance money. Tamika, I'm back and forth with Maya and everything, so I'm not sure where that stands. I don't know that we need to have that conversation right now, just that through our office, that there's history there.
And that was another concern or question about that insurance money, because I believe it was nine to ten thousand dollars. I'm not really, you know, for sure. But I know that due to that, the, the, the way to get up into the attic was through a closet door, up a ladder, because that's the way it was in those days. So, they did have to, the town had to put in a pull-down stair from the ceiling, which I think, again,
Some of that went to.
That went to that, because the cost was far more than just the way things are right now. So.
And one other thing, Austin, I think our office, we need to look at is, because I think the Historical Society rents the Wood House, similar to how the Fire Brigade rents
Right.
the old fire station and how Little League rents Marsh. Those lease agreements, I think, need to be really looked at as far as who's responsible for what and, and everything. And I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just saying that we, if they're town assets, then the town either needs to say, we're renting them to an entity and they're responsible, or they maintain town asset status and the town has to make that commitment and, and work with the nonprofits that are, that are renting them. So, I think that that's been an ongoing kind of conversation in the background, but never, it's always kind of fallen off the priority list, unfortunately. So, if we can maybe look at those. I think Mike Nicholson had renegotiated the Marsh Field one when he was here, and that's probably in some ways the easiest, because baseball and softball is pretty adamant that, that the town is hands-off and that they're going to do it all. And I think for both the buildings, we hear from the Historical Commission and the, and the society, as well as the Fire Brigade, that there would like to be some support from the town side for, for the town assets. So, I don't know.
I, I think that would be very helpful to have a little more, more discussion on that end. I, I would definitely agree. One thing on the roof, if I remember correctly too, we had some, I think the original amount that came from Senator Goby's office was tied to that part of the roof being done with, what was the term? There was a term for it. It was more expensive.
Because it had to be off the state mid-list.
Yes, because it was on the state list.
Prevailing wage, right, yep.
Prevailing wage, that's what it was.
Yep.
I think that might have had something to do with, I think we put in, whatever, however that, however that amount was settled on in the legislation, I think might have had to do with what was thought to be replacing the roof without prevailing wage. But when prevailing wage got an, added into the mix, obviously, it went up significantly more.
And I think it was also the quote was pre-COVID and then post-COVID, the cost of materials skyrocketed also.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely.
The earmark was twenty-five thousand.
Right.
But I think the earmark from the state was twenty-five thousand, so unfortunately, I don't think it caught us very far.
Um, I had, are, do you have more?
We do.
Because I had a question. Okay, good.
I think the other, the only other two things, I think, as far as the Wood House, and this is just kind of down the road here, is we may want to look at possibly a little bit of paint for, just to touch up at that Wood Studio. It's been about fifteen years or more. Possibly, I, I don't know if Sheriff's Office is back to doing that yet, or when they will be, but that might be something I could put on the radar in the future.
Right, because I know Sheriff Evangelitis, he was overseeing that for us and which we greatly appreciated to have that, that work done for us.
Through the chair, even if you can't get it through Worcester County, try the state. The state has work crews, Department of Corrections. They have work crews that go all over the state and do jobs. And, yeah, a lot of them.
I was just going to add locally too, we just started up our FY24 Senior Textwork program. And we have a couple of gentlemen that really enjoy painting, and they've done quite a bit of painting around town too. So, that might be something that we can look into as well locally. Thank you.
I will say on that one, they're in competition, because they want to paint the town administrator's office too.
We want them to paint the town administrator's office.
And then the, the only other thing that I have, I think we covered everything. I, I don't mean to throw, I don't mean to throw a whole laundry list at anybody. I, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware is possibly in the future, I, I just happen to notice my dad's an electrician, so I notice these things sometimes. Is some of the light switches, there's still the push button. So, that might be something that may need to be looked into in the future. Nothing's happened that I know of now.
They all work.
They all work, but might be something to think about in the future. The other two items that we have on our list, I don't know if you folks had anything, I, I know I threw a lot at you. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me.
I think for right now, I think we're okay. I have a couple of questions, but if you don't address them in your continued updates, then I'll ask.
Okay. Uh, the prison camp.
That was it.
Ooh, I'm glad, I'm glad I got it. We, we did a site visit on May 6th. We selected locations for the signs. DCR has the signs and, actually, this is late-breaking news, as of last week. I have an email from Dan Clark, as of July 18th. The parking lot right near the prison camp site was redone, and the signs, the educational signs have been installed. He sent me a link to some Dropbox account that I wasn't able to get into just yet. At any rate, it's in there somewhere and if anybody gets there before me and gets to see them, please feel free to let me know. Hopefully, I can get over there this week myself, fight the deer flies and whatever else. So, there is a lot, there is some progress going on there. The directional signs, we're still trying to determine exactly where that's going to go. We have a few wrenches in there. We thought that we could put them in a couple of places and DCR said no, so.
DCR would like to have the Intervale entrance as the primary entrance off of Whitehall. They don't want to encourage traffic on that road. So, they've, that's where initially where we were planning to put those directional signs on Prison Camp Road. And he, we said, okay, we'll put a hold on those and try and go back to where we want to put those on Intervale.
So, the parking lot that they redid, redid, was that off of Intervale or was that in the park off of Whitehall?
It's right at the cross-section where the streets meet, right at the prison camp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not, not out.
So, it's in, in the state park?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So, you gotta, you gotta go through the gate to get in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I was in there, but not, not the past couple of weeks, so.
This was as of the 18th, whatever, whatever day of the week that was.
Okay.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, yeah.
That sounds right. Yeah, it was Tuesday. Yeah, so, I don't know, we, for all we know, we could end up, we may end up with an extra sign that we could stick on a, I don't know, stick on town property somewhere, I don't know. That'll, I think we'll have to discuss that a little further as a commission and your input would be welcome as well. And we have to definitely get a lot more input from DCR as well. Renewal of funds. I heard from former Senator Ann Goby that there is an item, line, uh, there is an item in the budget earmarked for what funds we did not spend to preserve the prison camp. I believe that was, I think it was somewhere around thirty-two thousand. I don't have the number on, on me at the moment. If you want it, let me know and I can give you the exact number. That would be for installing the fencing across the, across the root cellar and across the doors for the cell block. It would be fairly tasteful, it would be tastefully done. It would, black iron gates. We would also have to purchase locks of some kind for them. We would need to get in touch with DCR, probably as far as, do they have anything that they need as far as the locks go? What would work best for them, what would work best for first responders if they needed that? If they needed access and how would we deal with that? So, there's a little bit to do there. The state budget, as far as I know, has not yet passed, but Ms. Goby was confident that it wouldn't be going anywhere as far as getting knocked off of the budget. So, we should be okay, from what she's telling me. Fingers crossed, we should have that amount, that funding hopefully back for FY24. And then the tunnel, there's a tunnel that DCR is looking to either fill in or demolish. They've agreed to hold off on that until we can figure out exactly what we're do, what our recommendation is. And our recommendation is based off of what was it used for? That we're still working on getting some more input on. We've had a couple of different sources that have given us a couple of different answers. So, one of it was for, I believe, for steam utilities.
A cistern.
A cistern.
It was located right under the kitchen shower area, so I'm thinking some sort of right, cistern, plumbing, water.
Right, and before the project really started, well, when we first were in the initial stages of this project, DCR recommended that in order for the tunnel to be of safety and, and whatnot, we were to purchase grates and things to cover the openings that you can look down into the tunnel, which we have purchased. And so, we're
Matter of fact, I believe DCR has them.
They do, they do. So, again, it's still.
There's a little bit of contention on, on that topic, because the grates were purchased and then DCR did their engineering study on the site. And of all the, the main locations that they studied, the tunnel was essentially the one that there's, there was no good mitigation, safety mitigation that, you know, we could do to prevent. to prevent any sort of hazard. Whereas some of the other structures, there were ways that we could do and things that we're putting in place to help.
Correct.
Mitigate some of those safety concerns. This one, the tunnel, they felt there really wasn't anything, so we're trying to go back and forth on what is it? Is it historical enough that we, yes, we really still wanna fight to save it? Continue with putting the grates and everything on it to try and prevent access? There's still, you know, the concern about if people are walking on top of it, could it collapse? So we're still trying to work through some of that.
And it was brought up by Senator Goby at one of our former meetings, um, with DCR, Dan Clark. When they initiated this engineering assessment to look at the property, did the company know that the idea was to preserve versus
Right.
take down? And that was not disclosed, so.
Right.
You know, um, I think that puts a little added spin
Yeah.
on this project and where we have two points of view coming.
And, let's see, did I get everything here?
Thanks.
Tunnel research continues, guide signs. DCR has initiated clearing and cleanup of some of the sites, I believe around the hospital.
Yeah.
Foundation, that was done, I believe, in the fall. Research continues, I think.
Um, the naming for historic sites.
Yes.
Is another goal of ours.
And that's number five. Oh, and I just noticed I missed something on the wood studio and the wood house. There, uh, there have been some reports of visitors in there of the four, of the gray four-legged kind. Might be something to keep an eye on too.
In both the house?
And we've, we've set little traps, but.
In both the house and the studio?
Yes.
Yes. Because I know in the closet in the wood studio, from the past historical commission, from Helen Viner years, there are, uh, cabinets of papers and things and definitely you can see that there's been a little rodent issue there as well, which are for the course.
Yeah, it's old building.
Old buildings.
Territory.
That's right.
Yes, yes, she does.
No.
Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can get back in there and have our meetings in there, uh.
As well.
Soon, as well as some of these other, um, groups that have, uh, been there in the past. I believe scouts were in there too.
Yes.
Alright, uh, pro, town property naming criteria for historical commission to evaluate for town property naming requests. So we had a couple of questions on this one. See if I can find it. So the commission. Oh, here we go. Sorry?
I was gonna say, as part of, the, the basis of this was taking the policy that the select board had gone and coming up with our own list of questions, criteria, that if we got a request, what are the questions that we're gonna ask to see whether or not you would.
How you would make a decision.
Exactly, yeah. But then it stemmed a couple of questions based on the policy itself.
Exactly, and then we, you know, wanna know where we stand as well as your input of your expectations of the naming of, if it's brought to our attention.
Yeah, the, the piece in here was, and I don't know if this is what it was intended, the historical commission, this is in general provisions, the historical commission shall then forward their recommendation to the town meeting based on it coming to us. But we wanted to clarify if the request, the historical versus non-historical nature of a request, because there could be the ability of, you know, whether the location or the person in question, if we feel that there isn't a historical significance to either one of those, you know, does that come back to the select board for a final review and recommendation for the warrant? Or how would that be? It, the, the way it was worded here, we were worried that we would have to approve everything and if we didn't feel there was a historical nature to it, we didn't wanna say, no, we don't support putting it on the warrant when it would be perfectly fine, it's just the historical perspective wasn't necessarily there.
And I can't speak specifically, I remember that this was a conversation kind of around developing this policy and I think part of the thought was that, um, even for non-historical sites, that there would be some level of future historical relevance? And so still wanting to have historical input on pretty much anything regardless of today, if it was historical or not, but looking forward fifty or a hundred years, that there would, it would maintain some sort of, or create some sort of historical significance? And, and how the, the commission felt about that. Tamika, I think that that was kind of some of the conversation around it. I know that this was back and forth between a few different boards, so.
It was, yeah, it was kind of an in-depth process to figure out a policy that would be equitable so that, you know, you weren't taking up all the property in town and, and ambiguously dedicating it to somebody. Um, I think the intention too was to also verify that people weren't recommending locations that did have historical value, that either, you know, we would maybe not wanna put something there? Or if we did, we would wanna better understand what that historical piece is? Cause maybe there are pieces in town that would be appropriate for dedicating to certain individuals. Um, so I think that was kind of the thought behind it. And then, um, previously, it was at the select board's discretion whether or not it was dedicated. And we decided it would be more equitable if we brought it to town meeting so that the residents had a say in that as well. Um, so I think it was just valuing the input of the historical commission and how you guys felt about the location. Um, with that being said, it's completely at your discretion if, you know, you would be, vote favorably or unfavorably. Um, you know, things still get placed on the warrant and sometimes boards and commissions vote unfavorable, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't still go to the floor. Um, you know, so it's, it's completely at your discretion how you feel about it. I, I don't imagine we're gonna get, you know, too many requests, but it's there in the instances that we do.
Yeah, and I, I think we, we definitely appreciate having the input for that reason and that's one of the criteria that we talked about was if somebody is requesting a specific location, does that jive, if you will? Is there a historical aspect where we would say, hmm, maybe we need to reserve this for something else?
Right. Right, but if somebody wanted to dedicate the Central Tree, you know, when you could say, no, we can't, you know, we can't do it.
Exactly. Yeah. We just weren't sure that, you know, you know, if somebody came and said they wanted to dedicate a square for Ron Marsh, you know, he, i- is that historical enough for us to, you know, depending on the space, the location where it would be us to say, even if we said it, there's no historical per, perspective to this, we're not necessarily opposed to what's being, but should we be the ones to say yes or no to put an article on?
And I think, to Tamika's point, some of that was also making sure that whatever site is proposed for whatever dedication is that there's not some, some historical significance to that site that maybe we as a select board or individuals aren't aware of. Um, and like I said, there are a few squares around town, even when you drive, that have been named, but I don't know the history behind the naming. And so I think also some of it was to make it become part of the history, so it's, it's a both and, like, not an and/or.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
So, um, it's kind of my perspective, but I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I would say that the intention was for the historical commission to say yay or nay perhaps, um, but more just to provide your commentary
Okay.
to the board, to say, you know, we talked about it, this is what we're thinking, just to help inform the select board's decision because it would ultimately be their, you know, them that would be placing it on the warrant. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and then if, if it's, if it comes through and we do feel it's within the historical commission's purview to sponsor the article, we could
Mm-hmm.
do that at that point.
Absolutely.
Great. If that makes sense.
I think.
So, so in essence, sponsoring the article would be just giving our stamp of approval, saying we're in favor of it? Rather than.
Cause technically speaking, um, a private resident can't have an article placed on the warrant unless it's a citizen's petition. Um, town boards and commissions can have them placed, so the intention is that, um, by going through this process, it would be either the select board or the historical commission as the sponsor to place it on the warrant so they don't have to go through the citizen's petition process, if that makes sense.
So, so if we feel that it's kind of like what, uh, what Jen was saying, if we're, we don't see a lot of historical significance either way, but we're not necessarily opposed to it, would we just send that, just let you know about that and pass that on to you and?
You take it from there.
Yeah, and then that's what we would take it from there.
If you'd like to recommend it, go for it?
Yep, absolutely.
So, so that would be an option.
Yes.
So we don't, so in other words, that does not necessarily, so whatever we say, we're not the, we're not the only ones who can.
No, right.
It could be, obviously, it could be.
Great.
Did you guys look at the Fred and Shirley Warren Square? Cause there's that
The boulder?
grinding wheel, did we look at that to make sure that that's preserved by the historical society?
I think that went, that went through before the policy was approved.
No, that one just went through.
That was a ci- But that was a s-
That was a citizen petition?
Citizen petition.
Nope, that's the one that was done incorrectly, so you guys, you guys sponsored it.
That was the Glenwood and Campbell?
So, right there.
But I thought that there was conversation about that that stone, if there was historical significance to the stone and it came back that it was not, but I can't remember.
All I remember is, uh, Mr. Conoculi saying a neighbor wanted it for his yard. I happened to drive by it the other day and I was just thinking, you know, we're, we're worried about making sure we preserve the historical.
Yes.
Uh, chances are, that's more historical than probably some of the lesser things that the historical society has.
Yeah.
You know, cause you've got some newer things that are less significant, I, I, you know, they're all significant, but I, I just, cause, you know, I drove by that now, cause I'm a Gus it's all.
Yeah.
And I'm like, okay.
I was just gonna add that, um, that one did go to the historical commission, but at the time, the policy was very new and you guys weren't comfortable with making a decision one way or the other because you didn't really know what your place was in it. So at that time, because of the confusion with the rewriting of the policy, the select board had agreed to sponsor it on his behalf because at that time, he had run out of an opportunity to get the signatures required for a citizen's petition. So in that case, that one, um, was handled a little bit differently than it would be moving forward. I'd have to go back and review the minutes though to see if anything specific was said about what was going to be placed, but it was my understanding, and I believe in the policy, it says that the select board has to have a say or approval of, of what is placed so that we don't have circumstances like some others in town that, that were not done it, maybe in a manner that had, the board had thought they were.
Yeah, he had a drawing, I remember, he had a drawing. The only thing is, is I just was wondering if you guys had looked at that grinding stone to make sure that it doesn't just end up with someone else's yard ornament, if it's something worthwhile.
Through the chair, the big thing I remember from that is we weren't paying for it.
Correct.
Right.
No.
Right.
That was completely the family was paying for it.
But, and I do remember a conversation about the stone and I can't remember, for some reason, I felt, I thought that it had come back that there was not like a town historical significance.
Something like that, I, I probably, I'll go back and look at the minutes.
But who did the analysis?
Right.
Right.
That's the thing.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I hate to say this, but I'd be like, oh, there's nothing, it's not a problem, get rid of it.
Right.
But.
Right.
I don't recall it coming back to the historical commission or historical society.
I don't.
Can you bring it over to Addison Redfield?
Yeah, he might know.
Um, but your, your point, Tom, was the other piece that we just had a question on and it might be related to general provisions, section F, um, you know, the costs of the dedication and naming are incurred by the applicant, but there wasn't anything specifically mentioned about maintenance? So if there's a grassy area, who's responsible for maintaining that? Making sure it doesn't get overgrown, looks nice? Is that all on the applicant or whoever's submitting it? Does the town assume responsibility for any of that at some point? I just wanted to clarify that and see if there was something worth adding.
I, I know that that came up in the discussion and the intention is that the people who requested were going to take care of the maintenance, but we know in a perfect world, I think, you know, Lou said I'm gonna die at some point and I'm not gonna be maintaining it, so.
Twenty years from now, everyone's gonna go, what?
Right, exactly, and technically it is still on property though.
Right, it's not gonna get mowed or anything, right?
Yeah, so I think that's kind of.
Just a consideration to.
It's a great idea, but yeah.
It's not mowed now.
Yeah.
No.
Right.
But it's a very fair point, John.
Something to.
And I think some of it depends on what the current existing space is, like, that's a currently a green square versus some of the other ones that are paved and.
Exactly.
So, yeah, no, fair point.
And one thing I just noticed, Tamika, and, um, I just printed this off for tonight, the, where did I go? Under general provisions, section B, it talks about two-thirds majority at town meeting and then under the procedure, section E, it says majority vote. So I just wanted to double check which one it was and make sure there's no conflict.
Um, and we did decide on two-thirds majority, so I thank you for pointing that out and I will correct that in the policy.
Yeah, if it's two-thirds, then it's the prece, procedure section, section E, that has majority listed.
Yeah, I, I think the intention was to do two-thirds because that would be the requirement if it were done as a citizen's petition.
Yeah.
So I think that's why we decided to go that route.
Yeah, just wanna make sure there was no conflict there.
Thank you, yep, I will fix that tomorrow.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I know that the historical commission runs under MGL, cause there's no specific bylaw, it just references that. Do we have a specific policy by the town for the historical commission?
Uh.
We don't know?
So.
I would say no.
I don't think so.
No, so.
It's not a bylaw and, and it's, I think we just operate under MGL.
Okay. I, I didn't wanna knock, from what I was hearing, I didn't wanna miss something if there was a policy out there, that's all.
I don't think so.
And I just found some of the other questions here. Uh, I know public safety, uh, excuse me, no, that was not mentioned. Uh, we mentioned maintenance. Another question we had was, or a concern, I should say, is that it really wasn't much said about review from public safety. Just in that, if something were proposed, we're wondering if there should be some kind of review from, say, DPW and/or police fire? If there were a monument that might be an obstruction to traffic or something like that? We're wondering, should there be some input beyond, uh, ours if, uh, for that particular purpose? Did, did I get that quick, did I get that right? Did I phrase that correctly?
Regarding to a, a historic site?
Yeah, regarding, regarding a town, naming of a town square monument. I, I, I know with Warren Square, it all, everything kind of came part and parcel, the naming plus whatever was going to be done with it.
So I think the board, for both the Ralph Anderson Square and for the Fred and Shirley Warren Square, had requested that the applicants work with DPW and public safety, both police and fire for, to make sure structure-wise, it was not going to be an issue if there were an accident involved? And also lines of sight were not impaired or anything. So I know that the board, um, I don't know that it's specifically explicitly in the policy, but I know both times the board at the time had requested that the applicants work with, with town departments and staff to ensure that everything was okay. And even, I know for the Ralph Anderson Square, there was concerns if the state needed to be notified because it was at Pleasant Dale, even though it was on Pleasant Dale, it was at the intersection with one twenty-two A. So I know that that's been conversation, maybe we do need to, part of what we need to do is look at all of our policies and maybe we do need to explicitly put in the policy, um, that piece because it will vary from board to board for sure.
Just add that on the application itself, it does require that the applicant provides some sort of drawing sketch, some photos, something to show what they're actually planning to do. But we could even, you know, whether we revise the policy or we add something to the application, you know, we could even do it in similar to how we use viewpoint internally for, you know, the permit applications, you know, where it goes through all the necessary departments to.
Yes, through the chair, that, that Glenwood Campbell, fire and police should definitely have thumbs up or thumbs down on that.
Yeah.
That's a nightmare intersection anyways.
Absolutely.
You know, you put something else to distract people.
Good point.
I, I, I would agree, I, I, I can say myself, I, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily an expert as far as lines of sight, I mean, I can probably get a rough idea, go down there and, okay, well, it is a rough intersection, something like that. But I, I for one would really be a lot more comfortable giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down on something like this. If I, if I had something in hand from, uh, DPW, uh, police, fire, that they were okay with it. I, I, I wouldn't wanna make that decision for them.
We, we could even add it in viewpoint, you know, and pro, process it similar to any other type of application and then it would automatically go to those departments so that they could do their sign off and then we could provide that to his, to the historical commission as well for part of your consideration.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense, that that way it's just there and automatic.
Yeah, how would it hurt? I mean, it's just more eyes on it, you know, the, the, trying to create a policy or, cause in MGL, it doesn't specifically state anything about them overseeing anything. So if it's on the application, then it's kind of like. Then it's kind of like, why create another policy, it's there.
Well, we'd be amending the existing policy that we have, just to put that line in, but I think we can just as easily add it to the application pro- or the permitting application process. And I think that carries that weight, so.
Safety review, historical versus non-historical, and I know there was a question I have from the last meeting. There was a, there was a mention of the whoever, whomever we would. Propose to name a square after uh, I think, uh, I think Jen, you've got the wording, right? That it would be posthumous for any public, would it be posthumous for current officials or any officials or anybody?
Yeah, um, naming in honor of elected or appointed officials, town administrator officials or staff shall occur posthumously. Is that specific to those people or is it to any individual that they're looking to name? That's again, you know, taking Ron Marsh an example, he wasn't any of the above if I remember correctly.
Right. And I know that there was conversation about that because that centered around like the Ralph Anderson Square was it. In doing it with the individual and families still, still present, it carries different, different weight than doing it posthumously. So I'm not sure what the, I don't remember the conversation specifically around that target point.
I don't either, I don't remember specifically what that was, um, I know. We had used another community's policy as a sample, I'm wondering if we carried that over, but we didn't have like a specific discussion about that. Cause I don't recall that specifically, cause like you mentioned, we, we have a little bit of a combination of both, we have for some folks, you know, posthumously. And others that are still with us, so. We'll have to think about that one.
Yeah, that's a good point.
A good point though.
You can as a board kind of look at it.
I would say, is that something that we need to look at and do a better definition of or whatever? Yeah.
So thank you for the feedback, it's really thoughtful and I appreciate the time you guys put into looking at the policies because we make them, but then don't. It, it's helpful to have the feedback from the boards and commissions that we're working with to help carry out the policies, so I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for, for, for the trust you have in us and um, and we just hope that we can. We can uh, do this effectively and decently in an order and that we can, that we can reflect well in the town.
Thank you.
Did we, I have here something about the Buck House, did we? You gonna mention that?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I won't mention that then. Alright, I believe, did I get everything?
I think you did. Thank you, Dan.
I think I did.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, unless anybody else from the commission has anything to chime in on?
Yeah.
I just wanna say a word of thanks to the Historical Commission, working on the prison camp area over there. My mother's family grew up on the outskirts of the prison camp on Coldbrook and Wood Road. And my grandfather had an eighty acre farm over there. I've done a lot of research on it in the area and looked at things and spent some time up in the Engineering Division up in uh, Ware. And um, was never able to find a picture. So because I was on a mailing list, I got an email one day saying that there was going to be a sidewalk by DCR. In the prison camp area. So I decided, well, I'm gonna go over there and see if they have anything different that the town hasn't had or anything else, and so I went over there. And the, one of the people that was there was the Chief Forester of the Gwobin. Water District as well as Away River Water District, okay? And I was talking with him and I said, you know, I said, my grandfather had a farm out here and. Um, I've never been able to really ever find out pictures of the property or anything about it and so on and so forth. So he asked me his name, I gave him the name and he. Emailed me back about two days later and gave me a picture of the farm, house, picture of my grandfather. And also provided me with a map of exactly where all of the structures on, on the farm were over there, okay? So you know, my hats off to the Historical Commission here. And also to a uh, Ken Canfield, who is the Chief Forester. And um, he is one who, very interested in what he's doing and he's putting in a lot of time and effort to finding out these things, so. At any rate, thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you for your input at our meetings.
Absolutely.
For joining us, we really appreciate that. And also, also Dick Williams has been uh, joining us for several of the meetings on the. On the prison camps, so thank you very much as well.
You're welcome.
To all who have provided input and assistance with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harry, did you have a question or a comment?
No, I did not, we're moving on to the next one, I just thought we were.
Yep, no, that's fine. Thank you, all, I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate everything that you guys have been doing and working with DCR and Senator Goldbein, Representative Ferguson. Um, to kind of keep that available and I think Austin's on um, some of the grant opportunities um, and everything also. So hopefully we can make a more concerted effort for all of our town buildings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so then, um, moving on to the conversation about reducing the Historical Commission membership. Um, I think there's a request to us to decrease the membership from seven members to five. It's, I think, difficult for quorum, I think we're all kind of experiencing that. Um, so you currently, I think, have five seated members, you have, you have four seated members, so even with the four, you'll, you're still.
We're still in need of another.
Secret appointment, okay. Okay, so is there, I mean, and this is a rec, uh, an ask coming from the commission if I understand correctly, so. Um, does the board have conversation, questions, concerns about that membership reduction?
Through the chair?
Yeah, sure.
Were there a lot of times when you couldn't get a quorum together?
I believe this is the first, we just barely made it uh, at our last meeting. But for this one, it was meant to be, it was supposed to be a joint meeting and. We only have three of the four members, and since we have three vacant seats.
Okay.
Technically, right now, we do not have a quorum.
So a lot of work's going to the U three.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, I, I, I shouldn't say that, Lynn's done, Lynn's done a fantastic job, she's our vice chair and. And she just wasn't feeling well.
Well, the nice thing is you can always increase it to seven if you want.
Exactly, exactly, and we hope that we can.
Knocking on our door.
Yeah, we hope that someday we can again.
Thank you.
So I'd look for a motion to, to reduce the, the membership.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to decrease the Historical Commission membership from seven members to five members. Second.
Second, thank you, questions, comments, concerns? I'll take a roll call then, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger, I will recuse as a Historical Commission member.
Calvin, I.
And White, my eye. Thank you for all you do, I know it's, it's a lot of work and so thank you and we'll keep trying to get the word out. I know there were a few times that we had some high schoolers, you know, young voters that were interested but couldn't necessarily make the current, all the time commitments. And that's a tough, tough thing also, so, um, and I appreciate the, the folks who aren't members but attend to provide input and insight. Because you're valuable also, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, we have an ambulance abatement request, um. Austin, do you wanna take this? Seth, do you wanna take it?
I'll take it.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'll do the chair. Um, basically, uh, each year, um, at the end of the fiscal year, we have a, an abatement write-off. Uh, through our ambulance company, um, and there are some true write-offs that are incorporated in that. Unfortunately, it becomes very problematic and I know uh, when Dan was here as the accountant, he had some. Concerns with bringing it forward to the board as a whole, because the documentation includes patient history. Patient's medical, um, insurance information, stuff like that. What I'm asking the board to do is allow the town administrator and the finance team to conduct the review. And sign the authorization annually instead of the board. Just because, if it comes to this meeting, it becomes a public document and potentially has problematic through HIPAA. Uh, insecure information, so that's why I'm asking the board to authorize um, our town administrator to handle that.
I made, who was doing it before?
This board was.
Oh, the board was.
Yes, yes, and our accountant had a problem with it each year, so we're just trying to. With a, a true financial team in place now, um, I, I think, let them review it, uh, if they feel something needs to go to collections. Or if we wanna sell it as bad debt, then they can decide that, um, and move forward in that, that capacity.
So, through the chair, just quick, so the financial team is who?
Would be the town adminis- the town administrator, the accountant and the um, treasure collector.
Okay.
And I assume if there's anything major, the first line would then be the board chair, if, if there needs to be.
Yeah.
Determination if it needs to come before the whole board or, or not.
Yep.
Um, that conversation would happen.
This is a routine thing that happens each year, give you a, a, a true understanding of what an abatement or um. Uh, allowable collected, collections are. We bill higher than Medicare rates, uh, we're medic, with, with double Medicare rates and our ambulance billing is based on. We take a average of all communities uh, in Northern Worcester County and that's what we, all the ambulance, municipal ambulances. Pretty much are pretty close to what we are billing, uh, the insurance companies. If an individual has Medicare, we are only allowed to bill at the Medicare rate. And so the difference from that rate to what our bill is, is the contractual allowance is, it's not a true write-off, it's just. It's, it's basically pushed aside that we are not allowed to, but it shows up on our ledger as an, an adjustment. So we're just trying to wipe that off at the end of the fiscal year, that it's, it's not truly uncollectible. It's just, it's, needs to be, um, you know, accounted for on the accounting side, uh, each year, that's all.
And you're treating that as an abatement?
Correct, yeah, yep. Uh, just to give you some rough numbers for end of last year, uh, perfect example, um, we billed. One million, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in ambulance bills and we collected three hundred and thirty-five thousand. I'm sorry, six hundred and thirty-five thousand and we had six hundred and thirty-nine thousand of adjustments through contractual allowances. So I would, I, I won't say that our, we're, our billing is double what Medicare is, it's, it definitely is. Um, and reason why we do that is our bills, our billing is considered reasonable and customary in the industry and so that's how our rates are set. And so if you get into motor vehicle accident, your motor vehicle insurance will pay the higher premium, so we're trying to recoup some of that. Um, and if you have Medicaid only, and where we see that a lot is Devro patients, uh, or Devro students. Those rates are a hundred and seventy-five dollars is all we collect on any ambulance for that. Where someone gets in a motor vehicle accident, we can bill twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's really the difference on the two.
That's kind of customary.
It's absolutely customary, and if you ever open a doctor's bill, you'll see what they ju- you just, you're like, so that's.
I was like, that's an insurance.
It's an insurance.
Across the board.
Yeah.
That's why we have billing copy handles whole thing. So I'm just asking for the board to grant the financial team to.
So I would accept a motion to grant the signatory authorization for the town administrator, um, for that ambulance abatement.
Second.
Why need the motion cards?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve granting signatory authorization for town administrator. And, and the financial team, should I put, and the financial team, uh, for the ambulance abatement.
And write-offs.
And write-offs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, I'll take a roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger, I.
Calvin, I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you Seth for bringing that forward. Uh, moving into our next item, we have a request to declare surplus property, um, Seth, I think this is you also?
Yep. Um, I did supply some documentation, some nice colorful photos for you and some background histories. Basically, I'm just looking for the, the board to authorize the, declare surplus property. Austin's gonna try to put it out and see if anyone's interested in buying it, if no one's interested in buying it, the fire department would like to use it for. Uh, auto extrication and just cut it apart and then send, send it, send it on fire or whatever. And then, you know, and just send it to the scrapyard after that. So, that, that's all I'm looking for.
Make a motion to approve the request to declare surplus property, two thousand ten Ford Explorer for the fire department.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry will call.
Second, I.
Matt's a.
Ledger, I.
Calvin, I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you, Seth.
How long have we had this thing?
Uh, we bought it used in two thousand twelve. We have not bought a new cheese vehicle since nineteen ninety-seven. This is a vehicle I'm, I drive in two thousand eighteen, was fully grant funded.
Nice.
Sorry we missed the latest one.
Well, you know. It's just gonna cost us more later, that's all.
Moving on, we have one day liquor licenses for, um, milkroom, well, let's start with. Yeah, we'll start with milkroom, um, the application is in our packet, um, we'll do them individually, cause they're for. Different dates.
Uh, date of event, right, I make a motion to approve the July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, one day liquor license, uh, for Lilac Hedge Farm slash Rutland Fire Brigade. At uh, two sixteen Wartus Street, Rutland.
And it's for the.
And it's for the maquard, for the school, at the school. Right?
Yeah, for the food truck.
This is for the food, this is for the food truck festival.
Okay, for the food truck festival at the school.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, oh, do you have a motion?
That was Seth, I mean.
I'll second.
Seth, I had a question.
I can only do that one, so.
As far as setting up on school property.
You own the school.
Okay, I just, and school's not in session, so I just wanted to, I know that that's always a conversation.
The principal was also moved in early in the process when we started planning this, so she's, she's been.
Right, and I know we approved seven cells already, oh, oh, a few months ago, so, um, I didn't catch it then, I just wanted to get it out there, so, thank you.
Should be a big day.
So we have a motion and a second, um, I had my question, anybody else? I'll take a roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger, I.
Calvin, I.
Wait, my eye. And then we have one for milkroom for the August fifth and sixth.
For the same thing, for the.
Um, I don't.
What is this, what is this for?
Food truck festival, um, this isn't for a specific event, um, they're just trying to gain some visitors to Schultz Farm. So this is just an offering to residents, visitors that wanna come and, um, purchase some beer at the farm, of these two dates.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, the August fifth and, and August sixth. One day liquor license application, uh, for Alter Vista Farm and Milkroom Brewing, one sixty-three Maple Ave. For shh, the open farm land Schultz Farm, is that okay? Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
And I have a question, Tamika, these are two days, so it's two separate liquor license application, like. How to, I forget how it works.
It's not necessary for them to do two different applications, we typically just issue one license with the dates listed, but I did pay two separate fees because it was two separate days.
And that also counts towards their total of thirty?
Twelve out of thirty so far this year, yep, I keep track on a spreadsheet every time I do it for the number of dates.
Okay, that was my question, as far as how it was tracked, I guess, thank you.
Yep, I do have that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I have my questions, anyone else? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger, I.
Calvin, I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you. Um, we have, uh, I think it should, I keep saying, I think it should be the last interdepartment, fiscal year twenty-three interdepartmental. Transfer request, um, this is one, um, from the Public Works, uh, um, from the DPW. Um, that came through in, um, relation to the EPA related stormwater work that the town needed to do. That, um, had been discussed in the spring, um, before town, annual town meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Like to make a motion to approve the transfer of thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars from account zero zero one dash four two one. Dash five one four zero dash zero zero zero, DPW overtime wages transferred in. Transferred into account zero zero one dash four two two dash five five four two dash zero zero zero. Stormwater management. In the spring of this year, the town unexpectedly incurred enforcement action by the EPA related to stormwater management. In order to avoid daily fines of up to twenty-two thousand dollars, we hired the services of Weston and Sampson to address the concerns. With dry weather, outfall screening and sampling. Uh since this was unanticipated, uh excuse me, since this was an unanticipated expense. There are no funds available in the FY twenty-three stormwater budget to pay this notice.
Motion, I'll take a second.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Uh just a uh kind of a, I guess, legal question is. I thought we were past the date where we could go back and get money. From twenty twenty-two funds, cuz if there's no money in the twenty-three budget. Uh uh could somebody explain that to me?
Um so this is going to be done as an encumbrance, which we have until July thirtieth to do that.
Okay.
Yep, so that's how we were able to do it, we did check with the the county captain on this one. And this has also been approved uh late last week by the finance committee, so this is the last step in the process.
And technically, we're in the fiscal year twenty-four budget now, so this was uh fees occurred in fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah, so that's why it's gonna be paid as an encumbrance, because today's warrant was the last cleanup warrant, um so that's how it's gonna be processed and handled. So it can be paid on the August seventh warrant.
Okay.
Can you clarify from my knowledge and the encumbrance that you're talking about?
So um it basically is an accounting accounting form that they use when you have to pay FY twenty-three expense in FY twenty-four.
Okay.
Um with those transfers, and we had those two cleanup warrants over the last two. Um we didn't have that issue cuz we had two separate warrants, but the next one is gonna be only FY twenty-four. So an encumbrance form allows the accountant to pay an FY twenty-three expense on an FY twenty-three warrant, if that makes sense.
FY twenty-four warrant.
FY twenty-four warrant, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this this money is is coming out of the FY twenty-four budget?
No, this is coming from the FY twenty-three budget, there was, there were extra funds in the DPW overtime line account. So it's coming from the FY twenty-three budget, but in order to be able to pay it on an FY twenty-four warrant. You would ha- you have to use a special form called an encumbrance form, which is basically just on the accounting end of it, so that everything is is done cleanly if ever there was an audit.
Okay.
To explain what happened.
Okay, and then.
Extra funds in the overtime, it was unspent funds in the overtime.
Gonna be my question, how does this actually impact DPW overtime, does it carry over or is it?
No, unspent twenty-three.
Plus funds in overtime.
Yeah, and whatever is left over will fall to free cash.
Okay.
It won't carry over to FY twenty-four.
Follow-up question?
Yep.
Karen, is this something that's normal at the end of the year on overtime wages?
It all depends upon what we encounter. Some years, fire has a lot depending upon what kind of cause, some years, DPW, it depends upon what's happening in the town.
Okay.
And usually, whatever is left over and not spent either in interdepartmental transfers. Um falls to free cash, so it's not that. It's not like we're seeing every week or at the end of every year that this was where it is, it's.
We're just very fortunate that it was there, so we we have one to take.
I was, I looked at this and going, we actually set money aside for overtime wages? I mean, I guess that's a smart thing because, you know.
Definitely in DPW, cuz you never know what the winter will bring.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, any other questions, comments? Harry, I'll take a roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger, I?
Calvin, I?
Wait, my nine. Thank you. Moving to our next item, we have a conversation um around the fingerprinting bylaw. So the bylaw subcommittee, and I think Harry, you guys, you, the two groups by, the bylaws sub. The bylaw committee and Harry realized that there is a fingerprinting bylaw on the books for um. Uh and I think the by- the ad hoc bylaw committee is looking for guidance as far as how to proceed. I think um some of it. I don't wanna have a super in-depth, long conversation tonight, given that it's, we're not talking about bylaws tonight, but also. I know that um Peter and the and the ad hoc bylaw committee really are looking for guidance, it's how much time and effort. Their committee should put into this bylaw in their codification process.
I've sent in a couple of their meetings, so if I might just kinda.
Yeah, by all means.
This is the old copy of the fingerprint bylaw. The new one or the proposed one down here at the bottom, instead of saying mobile food vendors, it says mobile vendors. Which means that that also could be, do we fingerprint every um liquor truck? If you're if you're putting a truck in there and you're selling liquor, this was really designed, and Peter, you can correct me, it was designed because of. The ice cream trucks coming through town and for the kids and stuff, so I can understand that, but. Uh I guess my question is something we'd have to discuss if we take this further is. Should it be for every mobile vendor out there?
He has an overkill, yeah.
You know, that would be my only.
I- i- if I may.
Say, I I kind of reached out to a few other communities, um and no one had heard of it. Other communities don't have anything, any requirements, I don't think of any um. You even for door-to-door salespeople or anything, um there's no fingerprinting requirements for. In surrounding communities, so I think I understand the intent years ago, but even now. It doesn't seem like any surrounding communities require even ice cream truck vendor, ice cream trucks that are driving through to be um printed.
Yeah, you know, there's a difference between a Cory check and a fingerprint. Fingerprint is a criminal background check, so as we get there and you look at these. Uh does the dealer of secondhand articles need to go through a criminal background check? I I don't know, so I mean, so those are kind of some of the things that I like to give guidance, but I don't know, and I guess until we get into it more.
Right.
I I was gonna ask on dealer secondhand art, like what about the time wide yard sale, or are the people that come into the town common, are they considered?
Technically, yeah, it could be.
So, we don't wanna make people do that, go through this for that, that's.
It's definitely overkill, I think it's good intentions, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just gonna add, um I suppose to police chief Monaco, um and there's also a bit of a financial burden that comes with it. Um because there is a a pretty substantial fee for having that done, and I know um that some of the concerns were. You know, you could have the owner of that business fingerprinted, but that doesn't mean that the employees they have working for them would be would be fingerprinted. Um and also the argument that, you know, our businesses in town, that we issue common vic licenses to are not permitted, so we're not, excuse me, fingerprinted. So we're not overseeing the staff that they have there, um so there were definitely some concerns brought up in the um maybe exclusionary. By the language of the of the bylaw, as well as the financial burden, um cuz some other department said it might stop some of these businesses from just pulling permits at all.
Mm-hmm. And I think, I know at certain times, even the timeline to get the return on the fingerprints is not immediate. And so there's sometimes a bottleneck there as far as you submit everything, and then there's a timeline to get it back. Um and so it becomes also a hindrance to doing business um in that side.
And the the other thing is, is only one person on this event required to be fingerprinted.
Right, what about anybody?
So if you have a tr- a liquor truck where there's three servers, one's fingerprinted and the other two aren't.
Right.
Cuz it costs you a hundred dollars to get fingerprinted.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I think the concept of this fingerprinting is good, but it has to be fine-tuned a little bit here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, there's a yard sale that went on here in town over the weekend. And there were four different people involved in this yard sale, one from town and three are friends and neighbors from out of town. How does that go over?
I mean, the Rutland Historical Society just had a a type of yard sale a couple of weeks ago, I mean.
Yeah.
It's it's just, yeah, that just seems. So it's not, I mean, I don't wanna, it sounds like feedback to the ad hoc bylaw committee is such that. We think it's quite restrictive and would like to see it a lot less restrictive or potentially. I I don't worked in some other manner, um I don't know.
Yeah, it certainly doesn't seem realistic, I mean.
Yeah, right.
Well, the, for example, if you say, take a small bakery shop. And they wanna come here and they wanna sell some cupcakes and cakes and stuff like that, well, you know, you take a hundred dollars out of your budget. And from a criminal perspective, what are you looking at at that place? So I think it's, for me, I a- and sitting there, I think they've done a great job of trying to give this to us. And now it's up to us to say, how practical is this, how do we define it down to make it sense?
Right.
Yeah.
No, through the chair, especially we're we're trying to grow the town more activities and more, I mean, this is gonna. This is gonna hinder that, I think, so, you know.
Cuz right now on our events, the police chief is supposed to be doing these vendors. They haven't been done, not his fault, but we didn't even have it on the events thing. All we had was basically the health department. And I know if you have a truck that has a food vendor on there and it has propane and cooking equipment. Correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department has to re- has to check it out, so.
Well, if I may, it does go through the internal process, so although the Board of Health is the issuing authority in our viewpoint system, it does go to the police chief, the fire chief. It goes to all the interdepartments, um but no, we have not been including the fingerprinting in that one.
So, yeah.
I was gonna say, I know police and fire do inspect, but they do trucks also.
Yep, that's part of the yearly inspection process, yeah.
But, so, I mean.
I I think the language should be changed, some, I don't know how, but you could have. The Boy Scouts, the food truck, okay, and you're charging them a hundred bucks, you got five kids helping you serve. Well, that doesn't kinda, so I.
Do anything.
I'd like, I'd like to see it stay, it's just, I'm not.
Not realistic.
Well, and I I guess I would take it even farther and kind of it would be wanting to have additional conversations. With uh surrounding towns and communities, but the few that I've reached out to don't have, they don't have anything at all like this on the books for any of their. Incoming vendors, door-to-door salespeople, whatever, and so I als- I almost wonder if there's value to having it. Period, exactly. Like if if any, if there's a specific area in here that we feel is beneficial, could that be worked into any other related bylaws? Because I know we have the the door-to-door sales bylaw, um most, most people that are going door-to-door sales aren't adhering to that bylaw. And most residents aren't pushing back on the door-to-door sales, or door-to-door people anyway, um and there are a lot of exclusionary. Populations within that bylaw, but if there's something, if there's a want for that, then maybe work that into that versus. But like I said, even in talking to the other, the surrounding communities that um have the door-to-door bylaws, they don't have fingerprinting requirements. In either, um because again, it becomes a a big.
If I, if ice cream trucks, fingerprinting isn't gonna solve that problem. Because if you're a mom and dad, you give your son a uh three dollars to go out and buy an ice cream cone. You know, doing a criminal background check, Cory check maybe, but not a criminal background check, but. Huh?
I haven't seen the ice cream man.
Comes through my table and all this, it cost me a fortune.
Maybe it's good that he doesn't put in my neighborhood. So.
So, yeah, we can either ask him, I guess, from my perspective, look, go back and clean it up, or. We can take it under our next bylaw meeting and discuss it whether we wanna keep it or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think I don't want them to spend a lot of time cleaning it up if the board kind of consensus-wise is leaning towards not. Um and it seems like we're really between that, like clean it up and make it a whole lot less restrictive versus just do away with it entirely, so. Peter, is that good feedback for you?
That's a fine start, but I still don't have a good sense for what the board wants to do. I mean, it be, I I'm hearing that. I understand this is a highly complicated question, I think Harry touched on a bit of what we talked about, but not all. By a long stretch about the different things we can do, we have a number of options, we just don't wanna spend any more time until we know what the select board wants. If we were to stick by the charter of the bylaw committee. We would streak out, strike out mobile food vendors, ice truck, ice cream truck vendors, hackney drivers, pawn dealers. And dealers of secondhand articles, because we do not do that today, and that would be strictly within our charter, but we didn't feel comfortable making that decision on our own.
So you'd be left with hawking and pedaling door-to-door?
Yes. Cuz that is exactly what the town does today. And likewise, I mean, there there was a whole issue about, as Harry brought up earlier, who gets the background check? If it's only the person going for the license, I mean, okay, but I don't see the the value to public safety in general to that.
Yeah, and to ask it for every individual, it becomes not realistic on this, on the the staffing of. Town staff as well as, um so that's, I think, why I'm leaning more towards doing away with the entirety of it.
Completely repeal it, I'm, hey, I'm all, that's that's number two on my list of options for this.
Um so can we continue to collect a little bit more feedback from surrounding towns and communities, but lean towards repealing? So not to spend any more time on it right this minute, I mean, we have our meeting on Wednesday and then next week on Monday, right? So we can hopefully give you some some guidance either at our meeting on Wednesday, just a brief conversation like, yep. No surrounding towns do it, or this is what surrounding towns do.
Um I will tell you that Anita did something through email to a bunch of town clerks. And she said that the most interesting response was from Littleton, who's it, who's. Fingerprint bylaw is almost exactly like ours, I think the biggest thing, we had mobile truck vendors and they don't, our mobile food vendors. And they did not, uh they also don't do it, so they're going to change it all to be Cory's instead of fingerprints. But I don't know what else they're changing in their in their next bylaw iteration.
And I feel like Cory's are even more cumbersome and restrictive than.
I don't know how you monitor that, though.
Right, than, yeah. Same problem on, do you do it just for the applicant, what about everybody that's working for them? But oftentimes Cory's take even longer to come back than than fingerprints and.
But Cory's have a longer value, have a longer life.
Right, and I think for for the concerns of this, Cory's hold more weight. But again, I don't know how realistic that is when it comes to the implementation and and um enforcement.
The other thing that I didn't see in here is, what's the length of time that a fingerprint's good for?
Well, strictly by the right, by the reading of the law, it's how long the license is good for.
Driver's license?
No, the um the license they're applying for, these are all done with respect to a town license. So however long the town license is good for, that would be how long the fingerprint check would be good for.
Annually.
So that would be a lot.
Yeah.
Would be about a year for for uh for most Board of Health licenses, as I understand it.
I know through the chair, most of the athletic leagues, they they all, of course, run Cory's on all of us before we can. They flag sex offenses, that's pretty much all they're looking for. So really, if you hire a company to do it, or whether the PD do- does, whoever does it. It all depends on how in-depth you want the Cory to be, you know?
Right, what the intent is.
Triple I, which is all the states and other, you know, really all depends, there's different levels of it, so. Most things like this, I would imagine, are just looking for sex offenders, generally speaking.
And and the other thing that uh uh concerns me is here is, most of what we do here are town events. So, you know, we're not getting a lot of outside people coming in, unless you happen to be a Electrolux or something, you know?
Yeah.
Kirby.
Solar companies, right.
Right, solar companies knocking on your door. Um and then uh. I don't even know what, if it's good for a year, is anybody really ever gonna use it?
It's just a formality.
You know, so, okay. I mean, I know the reason it was put in, but maybe it's outlived its usefulness.
Karen, do you have a comment?
The board can't repeal that, though, you can suggest a repeal, but doesn't have to go to town meeting for the for the town.
It does.
I wanna make sure that was clear, cuz I'm like, you guys can't repeal it, it has to go to the town to repeal it.
Right, and it would be in whatever pack, pack of recommendations whenever it comes, but yes, yeah, 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 yep.
Quite a lot of them have been ready supposedly for a long time, so let's get through those before we start worrying about all the other ones.
Yeah, it it, the the thing, but when I ask people about this, they're coming back to me saying fingerprint, what is this for, a gun license? Cuz that's really. Cause that's really all you're looking at fingerprinting for nowadays.
The LTC, yeah.
For your LTC carry, so just, I guess if we are gonna do this to the town, it has to make sure that it's not anything to do with that.
And and to Tom's point, I I, a lot of these places, like, I I'm with my children, I'm keeping an eye on them. Whereas if you're at a school event where you're not there keeping an eye on them, so Corey's are more valuable, so you know that you can trust the people around there, but.
It's not direct supervision, that's what it's, direct supervision, like the kid, the lifeguards, the pool. You know, that's really what these are for.
You could have somebody walking around there eyeing a kid or something, but he's not serving food, so. I would, uh, if I, I I I would, I guess, now that we have a chance, I would recommend that we. Um, put this before the town for a repeal.
Does that, Peter, it sounds, it, so are you on board with that also?
Yeah, I think probably for the most part, in other words, yeah, we we've gotta take a little, little bit closer look at it, I think, yeah.
So Peter, it sounds like, don't do any work, that the board is leaning towards recommending complete repeal of it, but um, we're gonna do a little bit more. Investigation on our side also.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and then next up, we have bylaw review, discussion of which bylaws to review at our upcoming meetings on Wednesday, July twenty sixth. And Monday, July thirty first, um, I think at our last meeting, I kinda just suggested that we start at the beginning. And work our way through and have a two-ish hour time limit and what we get through for that two hour, two-ish hours. If we're in the middle of something, we'll extend it a little bit, um, but I hate to put that we're going to do. A a certain set and then either not get to it or. Get through those quickly and then not be able to continue moving because we posted or just. Advertise that we were only gonna discuss a certain few, and I know that that's really hard, um, for public posting purposes, for the public that wants to. Be able to participate or at least hear what's going on. The good side is, we should have have Zoom available, so you can always just put it on in the background and listen for what is of interest or not. And.
Is there a way that we can just call it a a priority order, just say, these are the first five in this order that we're gonna review? And not specify a timeframe, just however long it takes us to review, this is the order that we're gonna do it in?
Peter, I think that you have a a group that really kinda looking forward, need to be moved forward together, is that correct?
That is correct, and it does start at the very beginning of of the bylaws. My goal for Wednesday's meeting is chapters one and two, which is general provisions and government. Governmental structure itself. My goal for the next one is financial matters and legal matters.
Peter?
Yeah.
Would you? Would you uh be agreeable, if you will, if the board is to, there are some that are kind of knockoffs. I mean, bylaw to establish official names for streets, that's not gonna be a big discussion, I don't think.
Yeah, but you don't wanna do.
What I'm saying is, is there.
Don't wanna do ones at the back of the book until you get the, until you get the the infrastructure right, and that's what the first couple of chapters do.
Okay, I I don't see what it has to do with certain bylaws here, I just think if these things are simple and we wanna start the process. Getting them out to the Attorney General or whoever, Secretary of State, that there's one or two that we could whip out and get done. And still work on the other stuff.
The fast answer is nothing happens till town meeting happens.
Right.
I mean, more generically, it's your review and in this case, in these cases actually re-review. Because the it the, a previous iteration or two, the select board have seen these, but you should, you as the body who are gonna be around when they go before town meeting. I assume, uh, you should, you should probably be familiar with them. So it's you folks and then the town council, if there are any changes beyond what's been done so far. And then we wait for town meeting.
And.
Public information hearings.
I think there's conversation around public information hearings because a lot of these have already had public information hearings. Um, is that correct?
Well, let's be clear, let's not call them hearings, let's call them sessions.
Sessions, sorry.
Meetings, if you will. Yes, that's true, that is also part of it, which I did, which I did gloss over quite a bit. But yes, and those will be coming up as we come close to town meeting. Because doing them today for a town meeting, let's just give an example, doing, doing a meeting in July. To inform people about what's coming up in May is not particularly useful.
And I think there was conversation around having them go to the public before having kinda sign off from select board and legal. So that it was, you know, before it had kind of been the public and then come before select. Or legal and then select board and how that priority should maybe be shifted around a little bit.
It it has some, but the truth is, the first ones you're gonna look at have already been through legal.
Right.
And and I don't intend, my intention is not to widely open them up simply because. Unless somebody's willing to give us a bucket more money to have legal re-re-re-review everything that gets changed from here on out.
And I think I'm of the mindset personally of trying to keep kind of the the big bulk of. We need these to go together through town meeting for government to to continue to function. And then the the other ones, kind of the quote unquote smaller ones that I think, Harry, you were referring to. We can continue to do in the. Right, kinda piece them in, but I would like to spend the the conver- bulk of the conversation around moving this group forward. Because that's really what needs to go for all of government to continue to function. Um, and then keep the other ones, if we have extra time, we can toss a couple in here or there, or have another special meeting to cover all the. The additional ones, so that's kind of my rationale.
I guess there's something I didn't make clear, but earl- much earlier ago, like the first time I talked about this. We intend to have all except one bylaw ready for whenever this occurs. This, there's no big bucket versus smaller quote unquote less important ones.
So Peter, if I can ask you, which ones have already been reviewed legally?
I'm sorry, Harry?
Which ones have all, have been reviewed legally?
I'm sorry, I, audio's dropping out, I can't hear.
Peter, which ones have already been reviewed by legal?
Chapters one through six. So.
Well, from what I'm seeing and from what I'm reading, people, I, I mean, we'll, we'll wait for that, but there are some issues. That I think really need to be talked about, whether they've gone through legal or not. Just we're going one through six.
Yep.
Well, if we know one through four are larger, can we just state we'd like to use the two meetings that we have? The twenty sixth and the thirty first to work our way through those four? In order, one, two, three, four?
Sure.
I mean, that's, I was, yeah, if I, I was kind of just assuming that we would start at the beginning, envisioning, not assuming, envisioning that we would start at the beginning. And aim to get through those, but if if we get through, let's say we get through chapters one and two quickly. Then we could at least start having conversation around the next, or if two takes a lot longer than anticipated. You know, I don't wanna like stick us to having to be.
I agree, that's why I was saying, you know, if we're, if we're giving it an order and just say, you know, one through four are the first priority, if you will.
Yep, that that's where we're starting.
The, you know, start here.
Yep.
And not specify, we will get through one and two at the first meeting, three and four, we can just continue.
I don't think it's gonna be a lot of issues, I mean, I I applaud Peter for all the changes, but. I think there's gonna be one or two points in each one that might be a sticky issue, but it's not gonna be the whole.
Through the chair, where does zoning fall?
So zoning, I think, is under, Peter, you guys haven't touched zoning, right? It, that's technically under planning board?
That's not technically, it is under planning board, it's bylaw, the planning board has all. Uh, jurisdiction over zoning bylaws, we have, no other bylaw committee can have any jurisdiction there.
Yeah, thank you.
So the board doesn't.
All I'm gonna say is, when we had the public information hearings last time, there was a lot of concern. I don't know if they've all been addressed, but I think public. Input on these would be beneficial, cause I know. Um, when we had the public information sessions, and Peter, I think you'll agree with me, there was an awful lot of concern. Over the town administrator bylaw because of where we were. Uh, you know, I'm just saying, public information, it's important to get the feedback, and right before the town meeting. It's hard because we're trying to get the word out on all the other warrants and the budget and all that, so it's almost information overload. So maybe doing some of these now.
Is it something, something where we could do, like with the, um. With the town plan, can we post and like allow online feedback for anything once it's been reviewed? Is that an option?
I mean, I think that we definitely can, for sure, um, and I think there's been, Peter, I don't know how much the. Ad hoc bylaw committee has discussed or not, but I know that off and on, there has been conversation as to whether these were gonna be held. Until the annual town meeting, or if we would do a really, we, meaning town as a whole, would do a strong push. To get the word out and hold a special, um, bylaw only town meeting and how that would look. Um, before, like after the fall, but before the the annual town meeting, so that it, we could dedicate that amount of that meeting. To bylaws and only bylaws, um, but do a strong push to get the word out that it's important that people show up. To not have annual go forever and also provide plenty of opportunity for conversation around the bylaws.
Well, that was the whole thing, like the information sessions that happened here on Sundays to go over the two and a half override. I think it's important because you've got a lot of people that until they get told that this is changing. I know when I read through some of the stuff, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, cause I was told there was no huge changes. And then hearing that the town meeting's gonna potentially move with the bylaw, and that was voted on by the town. And why is this? And there was an awful lot of discussion around that one and the town administrator bylaw. At the time, and I know myself at town meeting, at, if we wait to do the information sessions. To the spring, I'm in meetings twice a week. So then I'm not allowed to go to those meetings, or I miss the finance committee. And I think it's important to get the word out sooner than later, because you wait till the last minute, we're trying to get budget information out and these. And I think these are as important as the budget, as it's going to change the way things are being done. There there are changes.
Oh, this is the law of the land, that's we're changing.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah, you're right.
So I don't take any of your comments, Karen, I agree with your comments, Karen, and I think, Peter, um. My hope is that by starting this now, that we can spend the time and and doing them as special meetings, we can spend the time to thoughtfully as a group here. Make the recommendations or have the conversation and then start working to get the word out, um.
But now what happens if the public comes out and says, this needs to be changed and this needs to be changed, do you wanna wait till it goes to the floor? Or do you do information sessions so that you guys then can have more time to go back and maybe look at some of them? Because I can tell you, uh, I know there's at least six of us who are very concerned with some of the writing. That we're at one of his public information session, uh, information sessions, and I don't know. You guys can say yes, and then the public, so then the public's gonna have these concerns. You're gonna go forward with them, and then this meeting becomes an on the floor debate that's gonna go. Long versus if you let the public speak now and then have time to go back to you to look at them. I'm not discounting the work that Peter and his group have done, I'm not, but they are making some changes. That I think some people in town are a little uneasy about, I know I am uneasy, I am uneasy about a se- about several of them, so.
I I think you're you're right about some people in town being uneasy, but if I understood Peter's charge. They've contacted a lot of committees and departments to get feedback from this stuff. So it wasn't just their input.
I I agree.
So, um, the people in town who helped him are. I don't know if they're okay with it or not, but at least it helped him develop what they have, so if it goes out to the town meeting. I hope a lot of people turn out for this, cause I, this, this is a, there are a lot of changes, some are substantial. What's the other term, Peter? Quantitative?
Con- consequential.
Consequential, thank you, so there are, there are some that are small and there are some that are big. And, I mean, I've gone personally, I I, I've gone, I reviewed probably ten to twenty of these already. And I found a lot of things that I am concerned about, so I'm sure the town would do, but.
And that's all I'm saying, I'm just trying to, I have to sit up there with you guys the same way. And I don't wanna be there from six o'clock until midnight because we're gonna have all this debate, if we get the debate done. And then have a more polished and agreeable one, I think it's a little bit easier, cause you have to listen to what the public says, because truthfully. It's not your laws, it's not Peter's laws, it's the laws that we put.
And and I'm gonna push back a little bit and just say that, yes, we by all means need to to hear from public and take those under consideration. And also, we as town need to be mindful that we're continuing to grow, so change is hard, and so some of these we need to.
And I agree.
It's going to be that kind of growth change that's hard, because it's it's a shift of where we, as a town this size. And only going to continue to grow, really need to be to operate as a functional.
But all I can say is the questions that came up around, and also, please don't take any offense to this, but at the time, the town administrator bylaw. It was very concerning to a lot of people that were on that meeting.
And my, and my.
And continues to be.
Right, and my pushback has been that having that bylaw then charges, essentially charges us as select boards. The select board to be mindful of the person that is being hired for that role, because that's, that's what they are charged with. And so that puts more of an onus on select board, in my opinion. To say that this person is a well-rounded individual that's, that is fitting this cha- this charge. Versus now, previously and now, it's been a little bit more at the whim of.
The board.
Of of the board and or a a couple indivi- individuals of the board, so I think. It, you know, I can, I I understand that argument and also I see a benefit to it, so.
And and I'm not saying that there isn't benefit to it, but I think the public should be heard and have their questions answered. And I know that during that public information, it was not answered, I know myself and at least one other taxpayer. Was asking questions and couldn't get answers, and it's concerning.
See, there, there've been a couple of of positions filled here over the years that I have disagreed with the board on. Okay, and I mean, you know, it's just one of these things where I did not agree with what the person had been telling the board. And so, you know, I just felt that one of the other, uh, people that was involved in in the search, um, answered the questions better. Okay, so in other words, we're looking at this and we're looking at that, and so, yeah, there's gonna be differences of opinion all the way down the line, but. You still have to be able to make sure that, you know, okay, you used the word well, well-rounded. Um, okay, you know, best two out of three or something like that, so I mean, these are the things that you have to consider.
If I might, yeah, I agree, we need meetings, but what we need are concerned citizens who are willing to go to the website. And look at the bylaw changes. Please, don't come in there and voice something you don't know anything, cause you haven't read it. If you have a concern, address it to us, come in early by looking at the website. Peter has done a fabulous job of laying out all the changes that are coming, he's showing you the old bylaw. He compares it to the new bylaw, it's a fabulous website, so I would say, yes, town meetings are important, we gotta get people out. But we got a lot of time to try to get them to go to the website, so that's where our first priority should be, get you to look at the website first. You know, and then come to us. And then come to us and talk to us, that's.
And again, I, I agree with informational sessions, but I don't think that's gonna prevent any sort of conversation or debate at town meeting when we actually try and pass these as well, so. It's all part and parcel, yeah.
So we'll aim for um, the first uh, four or so. Um, I think it was chapters one and two, which are general provisions and government. And then um, three and four, which are lead, financial affairs and legal affairs and how that kind of plays out over the next two meetings, um, is a little bit based on the, on the clock.
Um, you said general provisions.
General, general, chapters one and.
Appointed, appointed committees?
Nope, general provisions, general government, financial affairs and legal affairs.
Right, okay.
So I'm just looking at the organization on the website before you get down to the, the chart.
Right, uh, where I'm, I guess that's where I'm confused, if you look here, it says, okay, under this, general provisions, then we jump to appointment committees, still under chapter one. Then we jump to town meeting under chapter one, select board under uh, chapter two, select board under chap. So I know that general thing is, but when you look at the, the amount of stuff that's under the first one, that is a lot of stuff we're gonna go over.
Well, and I think that that depends a little bit on how much we get through, how much conversation there is around these. And I think that these are the ones that are going to have a lot of conversation. So there's, it's maybe not feasible that we're going to get all, through all four in these two meetings as well, yeah, so.
Well, we're gonna try.
So.
If we don't have a goal, we won't do much.
Right.
That's right.
Does that help, Peter?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I think one of the biggest things that we need to discuss though, at that very first meeting, is timeline.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, any other business to come before the board or definite future agenda items that are frustrating around in your brain?
Well, I, for me, uh, maybe Austin is still working on stuff, so I may not, shouldn't bring it up now, is getting uh, we, we don't wanna permanently put off the discussion of ARPA funds or the other stuff. I mean, there are a lot of people in town who are depending on us to make sure that we come up with whatever the money is, so I'm just looking at that. I don't know when we do it, certainly not in the next two or three probably, but.
I think the hope was, in the be, the beginning of August, we would have our finalized goals and objectives kind of to, that we could ratify and then begin the conversation, seeing what ARPA fund money is available, um, and everything and, and really begin those conversations, I think, Austin, is that?
Yeah, man, so I think uh, Becky has sent out, you know, kind of the updated spreadsheet for the use of ARPA funds, however, I think with the conversation from the goal setting session is the board was looking for some sort of deeper analysis and report with recommendations for you to consider how to move forward with the, some of the remaining balances of those projects and if there's an opportunity to shift some of those funds for new opportunities as well.
And the state still doesn't have an approved budget, so all of our state requests, we still don't know what, what projects may be, be funded for and what we may need on the, and pre-engineering side or whatever.
I, I guess I just want the town to know, it hasn't fallen into a big deep hole, we're still working on.
Yeah. Um, future meetings are, we discuss Wednesday, the twenty-sixth for bylaw review, Monday, the thirty-first for bylaw review, and our next scheduled meeting is Monday, August seventh. So if there's nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second a motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Carrie?
Second and I.
Matt and I.
What do I?
Yellow and I.
White and I, we are adjourned at eight thirteen.